Educating, Informing, Serving. FEC TV, Keeping Government Honest.
The article from the Grafton News, the June Grafton News, but if there's anything in there that needs to be updated and you have time to send that around. I'm, I know that, you know, the vote's going to happen before the next Grafton News goes out. So I'm happy to send something around, just not, or point to the website with the FAQs and the ballot or whatever, just let me know.
Yeah, Michelle, I will be happy to do that. I'll take care of that literally of the end of this, before this meeting ends, actually.
And if you could send it to the Grafton News too, Jack, that'd be great.
Absolutely happy to do that. So I'm just making a note right now to do that. I didn't, so, library, Grafton News, and also send one to the emergency list. It says appropriate to do. Um, it can always not print it, I suppose. So there you are. Is there anything I can help people with or be clear about? Or, and I really do appreciate, you know, fairly brisk pushback because it's one way I know if we've got all the answers, that you need answers.
Jack, what is, what's the numbers for Grafton K to 6?
Oh gosh, yeah, I've got that in the, in the town report. Uh, oh, I mean, the town report, the district report. And I would have to go look it up and I can't. Just give me two seconds. Let me just go while I scramble through my, my school box here. Let's see. Where is it? Isn't that it? Can't, hold on just a second while I visualize it so I can see what I'm looking at. Yeah, here it is. All right, important review. Um. Give me one more second, I'll get it. Uh, which it, let's see. Uh, because the two districts are, are really semi-merged, they really are. Uh, we know that the costs signable to Athens, Grafton, the ones that are unambiguous, are, it's costed $1,400,593 in odd change. The costs, uh, signable clearly to Westminster are $3,954,921, again, odd change. There are a, a number of costs that would have to be, uh, run through with an accountant to break them out because they really are paid collectively. It's an amount of $1,436,700, I mean, $670. Uh, I would, we are, we would assume it'd be about, uh, when we split those out, it'd be about two and a half to one, uh, Westminster to Athens, Grafton. But I can't break it out any more finely than that unless we have a favorable court ruling. But if we do, that's when we will, uh, both work, we would have probably a year or two to restructure all this stuff and we would probably bring in all of our new friends from the advisory committee to help us with it.
And how many, how many students are going to be attending Grafton School, K to 6?
We're assuming in the neighborhood of 50. That might be a little less than that. There are, uh, we were assuming originally as little as 44, but we've been told that there are a number of people who have moved back into Athens and Grafton as long-term residents who are intending to send their kids to the school. Uh, my count was at around six, uh, but that's what we had as of a couple of days ago.
And, and the principal, Helen Richard Pearl, you said, is that going to be a full-time principal?
It is going to be a full-time principal and we did push on this hard. Uh, but when we walked through the, the task set and the legal requirement of being physically present, uh, it really was not feasible to split it out. Um, I, I had, I had a hard time with this myself, but I really think that at least, given the, uh, the uncertainty of the year, given the fact that it'll probably be a year that we'll be teaching half in-person, half, uh, distributed, you know, online, that the workload is already crazy this year, uh, and some things fell through the cracks. We didn't have enough bodies to do it, that if there was ever a year to justify it, it probably was going to be the coming year. Uh, you know, people could disagree and I took some, I took some convincing, but I was convinced that at least for this coming year, we should do that. Uh, it's, the, the reality is that, uh, uh, we have so much, we've done, we have so much stuff that's redundant, uh, in terms of, of work, literally online and in-person class plans have to be built. Uh, people really don't, are still learning how to do online teachings and you need somebody to help with that. And, uh, Liz made it clear that she doesn't feel that she could take on a new district and run this one simultaneously, and I gotta respect that.
Hey, Jack.
Yeah.
I have a question, which has nothing to do with this, but what is the status of the court case? Is the court's been postponed because of the virus? Or it's just, or they're just not getting to our docket yet?
Literally everything was frozen except emergency, uh, emergency decisions. Uh, we did, we did suggest that this was an emergency, but apparently the court is not agreeing with us. I, I'm going to assume that sometime this fall we'll hear. Uh, I'm not super optimistic, but, uh, a lot really depends on whether the court is properly coming to session on a regular basis. And I think if we met once, all, uh, literally since all this craziness started in March, uh, that's not how they normally operate. And, oh, I was advised that everything that could be deferred was going to be deferred and that's where we've been sitting. Now, I would, if, if people want, if, if the, uh, if the select board wants to contact, uh, uh, David Kelly, I'll give you there his address because he's our lead. But that was the advice I got as recently as maybe a week, 10 days ago.
No, that works for me. I was just curious if it was the court's delaying it or that they were just shut down.
Well, I, I would say that, uh, maybe a little of both. Part, part of, uh, part of the issue has been whether or not we would do it, moot the case. So far, we've managed to avoid that. And, um, I'm going to try to make sure that we're still viable as a litigant for as long as it takes. Now, that was what I heard you all want, so I'm, I'm sticking with it and that's what we're gonna do by God's.
Okay, Stan, I'm back.
Yep, go ahead.
Thank, thank you. Um, anything else of Jack that we'd be, before we let him go? Everybody having other questions or concerns? Well, Jack, thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you for inviting me in and, uh...
And we'll try to, and we'll try to do all, all we can to get the vote out.
Please do. I'm very concerned about that, that, uh, that the vote will be tiny and that people will not, you know, will feel that they're not being invited into this process and it's really important that this is paid. So I thank you to all of you, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Take care now. Bye-bye.
Just, just so you guys know, I had, we had a little emergency here. We had my outdoor cats inside with the indoor cats and it was a, a kind of a screaming affair, which I had to go and, with the help of Bethel, to round them up. So anyway, that's what happened.
Successful mission.
Um, I guess, I guess it does, the next one is the highway. Um, and I guess we want to award the paving bid. Uh, Danny, do you have anything you need to talk about it before we go forward?
No, uh, Basin Brothers was the cheapest bidder and I'm fine with that. They, they bid on what we put out in the specs.
Well, then I guess if, if there's no other concerns, then we need a motion.
Uh, Danny just said, I'd like to make a motion, we accept the bid. I don't have the exact amount.
Yeah, it's 165,8600, I think. Is that right? Huh?
A second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I would like, I would like any add, any, uh, motion to include who is going to sign the, who's going to sign the acceptance of the bid, please.
And, uh, Bill Kern's the town administrator to assign for the vote.
Okay. All right, so all, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of awarding the paving bid to Basin Brothers, say aye.
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 Close? Danny, do you have a, do you have an estimated start time for these guys?
They want to start right off, but I wanna, I'd like to hold off until about the middle of July. Just, I, I would like to get everything caught up and done on putting them forth for that grant so it's complete. Um, it's taken us a little longer because we're doing a lot more than making it look good up there. Took us longer to get the people in, to get the trees down that we couldn't cut. Then, you know, vacation time and weather and stuff, it's just taking a little longer. So I'd like to wait till the middle of July and I also have, I'd like to get that covert changed out before they show up.
Yeah, I was gonna ask what your schedule of that covert was going to be before it's planed off and...
Yeah, I, I don't mind if I do it just before or right after they bow maggot, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna tear that one bawd up and then wait forever to do the rest. So I want them to be closed together. Um, Eastbound Sand and Gravel has not crushed the stuff yet. That's scheduled to be done the first week of July. So I'd like to have that stuff at least started to be crushed and ready for us. Um, because I had, I had figured in my original numbers that I'm gonna hire a couple of local trucks to help us with that when we start trucking that material. And I'm gonna work with Bill too, because I wanna, like, when we do that covert, we're gonna close the road. Um, you know, there're gonna be three of us, highway crew, and we're gonna try, oh, digging that covert and setting it and have it back open that night for traffic, but we're gonna have to close it so we can really move on that. And a lot of the stuff fires when we start putting down the, uh, geo grids and the gravel on, I wanna close it during the daytime, just so we're not dealing with all the traffic and everything, because that geo grid, you gotta roll it out 300 foot longs, um, sections and just, it'd make it go faster if we closed the road. Um, but I'll work with Bill on making sure that we do that right and post it. And I think we can do like Chester did and just put some signs up and giving people a little heads up and they'll put the road closed signs up when it's time. Um, that's my thought on that.
Yeah, I like that. It's a good idea.
Um, of course, right now, as dry as it is, that covert might go a little easier. We don't have to pump quite so much water. Um, I'm, I'm all good with that part. Uh, other stuff is, is with, uh, roadside mowing's gonna be starting and stuff. And in the past, we've always hired a fourth person part-time to help us out, either driving truck or whatever, and I wanted to see if you guys were okay with that again.
Is it in the budget?
We have, uh, what, uh, our flaggers and stuff that there, that's what we've always used in the past.
Uh, Danny, can you explain that last part about hiring persons to help trucking for exact, for what purpose?
The weird hire contractors, just with their own trucks to help us put the material on the Chester Road for that project.
Okay, this is for the Chester Road that you're talking about?
Yes, and then if, like we've done in the past, we've had, if, I don't know if we can even find somebody this year, I don't know if the guy's willing that did it last year for us enough. Um, we've hired a part-time person a couple of days a week to run one of our trucks, whether it's hauling sand or hauling material over there to, to the Chester Road project. Um, you know, it's, summer's here, everybody's got vacation time and, like I say, we moved with David for a month and a half just to do roadside mowing.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that would, that clarified that. Before we go on though, Al, who, who seconded your motion to approve it, approve the bid? I didn't hear any second.
I thought, I thought Al did.
I thought I moved it and Stan seconded it.
Al, you moved it and Stan seconded it? Okay. Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
So is everybody okay with, uh, with Danny's request?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. Um, Danny, you have anything other than the Chester Hill?
Um, Chester Hill, over last weekend, had a hole developed beside the covert that we had slipped mine. Who knows how old the void was? Uh, I cut the road open, we dug down where it was and recompacted it up. I'm gonna leave it open for a little bit where there's no asphalt patch there, just to watch it, but after we see no movement for a few weeks, we will repave the spot where I cut the road open. It's probably two and a half feet wide, like eight, 10 feet long that I cut open.
So that was from that pipe that we did?
Yes. I don't, you know, that when we did that whole thing, we were told that when they pumped the ground in, it would work its way back up in there and, you know, I don't, I don't know if that was an old hole or something new, but I don't know how it could be anything new because you don't see where anything's moved around it. Um, I'm gonna assume that it's, it's just a void that's been there and finally comes to the surface.
I got, I got a question on, on, it's on Chester Hill Road too. About those guardrails going down to Ellsworth from those trees. What's the, what's the thought about that getting that repaired?
I'm hoping that we're gonna be able to do it this summer. We have a bunch of old guardrail up here that we should be able to take, they just bolt in, take them apart and put, um, new ones in. I'm hoping that we can do it because you can't get, um, guardrail people to come in for small stuff like that. They don't want to come down. There's three spots down through there that need to be addressed.
And the posts are okay?
Yeah, yep, the post that just ripped the bolts out and the trees fell on them.
Yeah.
Inked the railing, so I'm hoping just to take them railings out and, um, put new sections back in that we have.
Okay.
Anything else for Danny? If not, Danny, thank you for giving us the report.
Thank you.
Um, uh, Kim, you want to give us the clerk and treasurer report? Are you here, Kim?
I'm here. Um, I don't really have anything to report. I gave everybody the expenditure revenue last week, or the last meeting on June 1st. Um, I'm assuming we're gonna, we're gonna try and do one more AP and payroll on the 30th of June, which falls on a, well, the next AP and payroll will fall on Sunday, I believe, uh, is the 28th of June. But we're gonna date our checks for the 30th of June. So all invoices, we're hoping, will be in and get everybody's payroll done by the 30th of June. I still won't hand them out till Thursday, but they'll be dated that Tuesday. I'm gonna check with Nemrick and then we should be done with the fiscal year. That's about it.
And, and Kim, just remind me, when do we set the tax rate? That, that, would that be at the meeting after that?
We can set the tax rate for the municipal tax rate. We can set that the meeting after. Um, I do have to wait for the listers to lodge the grand list, but again, they have asked for an extension. So as soon as I get their grand list, then I can divide it by what our budget is and come up with the municipal grant, municipal tax rate, and then we wait for the education to add it to it.
Uh, so, so basically, on the July 6 meeting, we will then set the, set the tax rate?
Um, Nancy, I think you're still on, Nancy? If you can, um, chime in as to when the grand list will be lodged?
She must be off.
No, she's not.
No, she's there.
I'm here. I was just trying to unmute you, unmute myself. Um, Party has the schedule. I think it's posted in a frame in our office.
Do you want me to get that?
Yeah. I think it's sitting on, on his table, maybe. Not sure. Meanwhile, I can tell you that, um, uh, Bill Kudjaski is coming to roll us over, um, Wednesday, this Wednesday. Yeah, I still can't quite see it. I'm sorry. I don't know if anybody else can. Um, and as soon as he rolls us over, then we're going to, um, start, start the process. Um, so we can start it, I'll, just a second, let me look at my calendar. We are pretty ready.
You've got here, you're gonna run the abstract July 9th.
Okay, so we will, we could do it earlier than that if you need it by the 7th. That's our outside latest date that we would do it, is the 9th. And if we needed to do it, your meeting is on this, the July 6th? Okay. Um. We can do it earlier than that. If we can do it earlier than that, if you need it, if you need it by then, we can do it earlier than that. I'm trying to wait as long as possible for the homesteads because there'll be a lot of revisions. But if you need it earlier, we can do it earlier and it'll just make you have a few more, you know, revised bills. Oh, you can't, you're not gonna do that. Right, I get it.
Yeah. I mean, it's not gonna make a difference if you do it, um, July 9th or you do it on the 7th, because even if they have their meeting on the 6th, we're, we don't have to set the tax rate only because we're not gonna do any tax bills probably until August if we're gonna go with not doing a supplement tax bill. We're just gonna push back our first quarter.
Okay, so you could do it on the 20th?
Of July, of...
Of July? That would be the next select board meeting or?
Well, the 6th, no, the next, oh yeah, the 6th and then the 20th.
Right, right.
Right.
But we can, we can have it done, we're sort of trying to, you know, whatever everybody needs, we're trying to wait as long as possible because of homestead, but we're also ready at our end with what we've done with changes and things. Um, so we could do it earlier.
Well, even if, if we had a special meeting, it only takes a matter of a few minutes. There's, there's not much. And I know that's a holiday weekend.
Yep.
So with trying to do the calculation after you lodge it, is still cutting it close to get the, um, chart up and all. So, I mean, we could still call a special meeting if the board doesn't mind at any point, just to set the tax rate.
Okay, just so you know, as far as our work, our work is 99 and a half percent done.
Okay.
Yeah.
Kim?
Yeah.
You remember we had a discussion about what the state is doing with taking some of our revenue away or whatever? Have you talked to the other members about that? Maybe you want to enlighten them? The state taking another power grab?
Hmm, what do you mean? I don't...
Some of the fees they're taking away with some of the things that we talked about, remember?
You mean like in the recording fees and things like that?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Um, I don't think it's bothering us too much. Um, I mean, it could in the future if they do turn everything into, um, electronic and online and, um, you know, people getting their copiers, copies that way.
But the point I was trying to make is that the state is, is little by little, is taking it over and taking our economy away, basically is what they're doing.
Well, it, one of the biggest things that the clerks and treasurers are talking about is if they start splitting the tax bill and they start collecting the educational tax rather than having the town collect the education tax. That's gonna play a huge part. Um, it'll be very confusing because it'll be different tax bills going out to the taxpayers. Um, it'll be confusing for them to make the two different payments. But not only that, we, on a quarterly basis, collect the educational tax along with their municipal tax. We only have to pay out to the state twice a year. We pay in June and we pay in December, so as we're collecting quarterly, we have use of that money that we're going to pay over to the state, but we don't pay it to the state education until December and June. So we won't have that money to either work with or interest. So we'll lose, you know, that little bit of income. If it ever goes that way, but it is one of the things they're talking about that's on the floor in the houses, and I don't think it's gonna happen this year because too much is happening. But that, they've been trying to do that for the last couple of years. It keeps coming around.
Okay, any other questions of, of Kim? If not, the, is, is, uh, Bill, is, uh, yeah, the town officer available or is, is he here?
Yeah, Rich is here.
Huh?
Rich is here.
Oh, he is. Rich, are you there?
Oh, wait a minute, you're, you're skipping something, Joe. You're skipping.
Oh, Little Library.
Yeah, I, I actually want...
My agenda doesn't have that. Okay.
Yeah, mine doesn't have it.
Okay.
And I, and I would like to actually, um, ask for some clarification there on that one, so don't skip that one.
No, we're not gonna skip it.
Oh, good.
I just don't understand it.
Well, I, I don't understand it either because, um, and it, because on the agenda it says Little Library located on the library lawn. Um, so I have some real questions and concerns about that.
Well, so do I.
Well, that's the, that's why it's on here. That's why it's on here for two reasons. One, it isn't up to the select board whether anything goes on the library lawn. It goes, it, that's up to the trustees of the library.
Exactly.
And number two, the only reason, the only reason we wanted on this agenda was to tell you, if you were to approve it, it has to be away from the road so we don't have to worry about it when we're snow plowing or anything else. So if you put it there...
Wait, wait, hold on a second. Let me just give you...
That would be one of the things we want the library to, to consider. That's all.
Yeah, no, let me give you the background on this, um, which, um, I'm not really necessarily sure that came out. I did not realize that Kara had written a letter to the select board. She approached me via Facebook Messenger, um, about a month ago or more to ask me about my support for, uh, a free Little Library. I told her that, um, I run a free Little Library and I didn't really have any interest in, um, maintaining a little box around town, you know, because we're open six days a week, you know, our, our, and actually more than Chester. So, um, it's not, not something that I was willing to take on the additional responsibility for, nor did I necessarily feel that we needed one in town. Um, I'm not opposed to them at all. Um, there's one in Saxton's River, they don't have a, that's right on the, um, end grounds, the Saxton's River End. They don't have a library there. There's one in Chester on private property, but they are not open as many hours as we are. So it is not something that I wanted to take responsibility for, but I told Kara that if she wanted to go forth with this project, you know, at another site, that that would be fine. And I didn't hear back from her. So my trustees don't know anything about this at all, so they have not given permission. And it would not be my recommendation to the board of, to the Board of Trustees of the library, that we put a little box, a little library box up on the library lawn, because inevitably we will end up maintaining it and I, and we don't need to. I don't want it and we, uh, we don't charge for, um, use of the library at all and we let all comers, you know, whether you're a guest or a new guest or a second homeowner, we let everybody use the library. It's not something I want on the library lawn, nor do my trustees know anything about.
Well, I guess since it's, since it's not really our choice, um, then we don't have to worry about it, as long as you, you guys will handle it. And if you don't like it, I wouldn't do it personally.
Well, she hasn't, she hasn't approached, um, us in terms of asking permission from the library board to do this. She sent me a personal message to ask me if I was interested in the project and I told her I was not.
Okay.
Um, so, and I guess, that's my feedback to you.
If I could get some direction from the select board, I will write her back and say that this is up to the, to the library, uh, the, uh, this town has nothing to do with that site.
I'd appreciate that.
That's fine with me.
Specifically what the intent is, to put it on that property, I, I didn't...
I mean, is that okay with the board?
I'm sorry, Stan, I didn't hear any of that.
No, I said if that was her intent to put it on the library land, I would agree with Michelle that that's not the proper place for it. uh, I would agree with Michelle that that's not the proper place for it.
Okay, I can add that to the letter if you guys want.
Well, speak up, Bill will send a letter that, uh, that, to the, uh, to the party. Do you want him to add that, that it's, that's not where it should be, or, or just let Michelle deal with it?
Well, I think that if she wants to write a letter and ask permission of the trustees, then that would be a discussion that they could have, the library trustees would, could have with my input. You know, I would, I would recommend to them that they not, um, go forth with it because I, I do believe that we will end up maintaining it in the long run if, if we do. And I, I don't see a need for it, but that is up to the library trustees to decide. And so, um, Kara may have been mistaken in when she directed her letter to, to the select board. But it is, it, that is, that, you know, that's what the trustees are elected for, to manage the building and the grounds of the library. So if she wants to go ahead and write a letter to the trustees, I will make sure that it gets on the library agenda and they can discuss it, and our meetings are open and she could attend if she wanted to.
Okay, so, but are you in favor of the select board sending something to her?
I think that you might wanna send something to her and say that it doesn't have anything to do with you. As Bill said just a little bit ago.
Is that okay with everybody?
Okay, that's all all right.
Wait, wait, wait. The library trustees.
Well, wait, wait, who, who said that, Alan?
Yeah.
I did, Stan.
No, go ahead, Alan.
I think it's important that the letter makes two points. If she's talking about it being on the library location, that decision is not ours. That comes from the, the library board. Regardless of wherever it is located in town, she needs to pay attention to road right of way, not creating blind spots for travel. So, so the town select board has issues depending on where it's located, sa- safety issues, traffic issues. That doesn't go away just because it's at the library.
That's a good point.
Okay, so Bill, will you, will you incorporate that in the letter for the...
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, all right. All right, can we, are we, are we done with the library, uh, little house or whatever?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're back to the agenda again, the town health officer, Rich, are you here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, Rich, so why don't you, why don't you tell us about CIC and whatever? And I'm not sure if we need to go into executive session, I don't know, it's up to the...
Okay, the only reason is I don't want anybody talking about any fault or anything like that other than in executive session, nor what the attorneys might do or not do except in an executive session, because it could affect our standing in court. So that's all I'm gonna say, and other than that, Rich, you can say whatever you need to say.
All right, well, I've been going down there periodically and I don't know exactly, what's going on down there as far as if there's anything, uh, program being set up as far as the cleanup or anything goes. I haven't heard anything, I've made numerous phone calls, uh, to different agencies to see if there is something going on. My understanding of this all is, uh, there really hasn't been no movement down there as far as the cleanup. The major, uh, chemicals have been removed from the building. So that immediate danger is over, but there's still a significant amount of cleanup in that place. And I know there's ongoing air quality, uh, sample testings going on. But the, uh, uh, my understanding of it, it's a very, uh, narrow, uh, scope that they are, uh, doing the air quality testing for, it's just related to the historic pollution that has been in there from why it was declared a brownfield site. And that's about all the cleanup that I'm aware of that's happening down there. There's still, there's cleanup going on. I'm not too sure who, uh, assuming it's the landlord, uh, but no...
You have to, Rich, you're, you're either moving or something, we can't hear any of that.
Okay, well, there is some cleanup going on that I have seen. But it's very marginal or very minimal, I should say. And there's still a significant amount of residual chemicals in them labs that you can basically taste when you walk through them. So I feel that there's a significant amount of cleanup that needs to be properly done. And as of right now, I don't see any state agency that, whether there is and they're just not telling me about it, could be, but I have not heard anything official. And they still have, uh, a couple of tenants in, in the building. The fire suppression is still not activated and the fire alarm system is still not activated. So basically, the only thing that has happened in there in months, in months, is the major part of those chemicals have been removed. Where they went, uh, where they are now, I tell you. That's about all I know about the building, it's, 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 it's completely, uh, flat as far as the cleanup goes. As far as I'm concerned, again, not to repeat myself, but whether there's something going on down there that I have not been made aware of and the state is on top of it and they have a plan in process, I only hope that's all true. I mean, if you wanna go into a question, I can tell you what I think about it, but all the guys can tell me that.
But I, I know that the state doesn't really give a damn, but isn't that really in their jurisdiction to make sure that those, the, the fire suppression system is, is functioning as a, as a rental? The hazardous materials are, have been removed but have been cleaned up, so it's ready for the next tenant?
It certainly is, but, uh, and a pretty scathing, uh, report has been written on this place as far as all of the, uh, you know, the violations. But to my knowledge, uh, nothing has been enforced at this point. But again, I mean, the good news is the major, the major chemicals in that building have been removed. And like I said, you tell me how far you want me to talk about this, I, I'll, I'll tell you exactly what I think about it if you wanna hear it. But I don't wanna get us in any trouble down the road either.
Well, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud for everybody's opinion, but maybe it makes sense for us to draft another letter to the pilots to be in the state to cover our butts and so that in the event that there is an issue later on, at least we have notified the proper authorities and the burden would not be on the town.
Well, that's kind of my feeling about this and I would probably take it one step further. I'd probably appropriate some money and see legal advice and let them either start looking into this, what has been exactly done down there? Maybe there's gonna be a Freedom of Information Act thing going on, I mean, I don't really know. But, uh, we should be more aggressive with that, or as too much time goes by there, like I said, I don't know if the, uh, the company that does have the potential contamination of that building, even if there's, there's, they're, they're, uh, they're still viable, I, I don't have any idea. And again, everything may be taken care of, I, I'm not privy to it though. And I would be a little more aggressive at this point, because what's gonna, gonna happen, if that building sits there as it is, what's gonna happen to it is, you know, a decade will go by, a few years will go by, or whatever. Either the building's gonna be more dilapidated, then who's gonna get stuck cleaning it up? It's gonna be the taxpayers who are drafting, or...
I don't, I don't want any further discussion on that, I, okay, please.
All right.
But I do want to say this to all the select board and everybody's listening. I have had preliminary conversations with Larry Sleson, our attorney, and Samantha Snow, his assistant, and they are going to look into preliminarily to all the issues that, that Rich has brought up now and I brought up to them. And then they, they want to have a team's meeting to meet with myself and whomever, myself, Rich, and whomever the select board wants to meet in the, in that meeting. And then, and, and they will go over all those issues and, uh, and, uh, that's all I wanna say. But I think, I think, Joe, before we write a letter, we let them give us that advice and then they, they just, they tell us what action to take.
No, I agree, if, if that's what, if that's what is gonna happen, then that satisfies me, that the attorney and the assistant will, will then recommend, uh, to, uh, the health officer and the board of what they think, and then, then we can make a, a decision based on what comes out of that, that, that works for me.
I have a more basic question for Rich.
Go ahead.
So, he's gone.
Rich is here.
I'm still here, you can't see my bald head, Al.
Oh, you disappeared. So, um, on my screen, you disappeared. So my question is, when that event, um, I don't know if escalated is the right word, but as it developed, you became a player, um, Bruce Martin from, uh, Fire, a player. Then there was somebody from New England from EPA. Was it ever decided who was in charge of the incident? And where I, where I want to go with it is, if the EPA person was overall in charge of the incident, was there ever a time when they turned the control of that back to you? Or are they still on charge of the incident? And I would like to have that in writing so we know. If they're still on charge of the incident, we should be asking them the questions.
As far as I know, the lead personnel on this was Devosha, because there was, you know, potential employees involved and everything, and work, uh, play safety and all that. As far as I know, he's the lead in all of this.
There was never any formal turnover back to you, the jurisdiction back to you, as you would do on a fire ground scene when you're a different officer?
No, I've been pretty much, uh, not contacted really by anybody for the most part, involved.
I think, I think that is important when the time comes to talk to our attorney or whatever we do, that documentation should be included. The, the tracking of how things develop. And it was never turned back to you, sounds to me they're still in charge.
No, no, as a matter of fact, they never took over. Other than filing a report, an inspection report, they never took over.
So you're talking Volsha?
Yeah, well, they told you, Rich, didn't they tell you, it's up to you whether you close the building? Didn't they tell you that?
Uh, did Volsha tell, the Volsha did not tell me that, no.
Okay.
So who told you that?
Uh, I'm trying to think of how everything, I guess that, I had, the only conversation I have ever had with Volsha is the day we actually went into all those labs. That was the only time I ever heard from any of the people from, from Volsha, but I have been told that it's really in their ballpark. Whether that's true or not, I'm not even gonna say that's true, because I don't know that for a fact. And who told me, uh, the health officer just have the jurisdiction? I guess I think I know that from, uh, what my obligation is. And I guess I was told by, like, say Bruce Martin, uh, I can't think of the hazmat guy's name for the state now, the head guy, uh, the hazmat chief. But the local...
Chris Eric, Chris Eric.
No, Cosgrove.
Yes.
Cosgrove.
He was really, I believe he was really telling me that the health officer slash fire chief under an emergency situation really has the power to shut down the building. I mean, but I think a lot of water has gone underneath, I mean, in hindsight, maybe I should have done that right off the bat. But didn't do that, because at that time, I don't think we really wanted to take the full responsibility for it.
Well, I think, I think, I think Alan has a valid point on, on who really has the control. And I think that when you meet with the attorneys and the board meets with the attorneys, let's, let's discuss that. And let's get their opinion on how to proceed or whether they agree with, with, uh, if they, you know, if they think that, that it's our responsibility or it's still in the hands of the state's people. I, I think that would be the way to proceed, because I think we're only guessing right now.
And one thing I, 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 I think would be, uh, uh, issue for the select board, and Bill'll stop me if I'm going too, too far, too quick. But, uh, I think one issue for the select board, uh, would be that put some kind of restrictions on that building at our local level, uh, as far as, uh, because I tell you what I feel about it, if I see some cleanup down there and I see some new tenants moving in before this is, uh, fixed and move forward, I think it's well within my right at that point to step in and put the yellow tape around the building. Because, for two reasons, uh, that building right now is not, should not be occupied at this point by tenants. There's so many illegal situations going on down there. And I would be afraid, uh, new tenants going in that side of, of the building with all that chemical residue could be completely harmless, I have no idea. But there's so many gray areas there that I wouldn't really want anybody spending a significant amount of time there.
I would, um, encourage you to think about, once you take action and you take control, you're gonna own it, just like a hazard, uh, hazardous site on the, on the highway.
This is true, but that's why I'm looking for a select board, uh, advice on, on this, because I think as a community, uh, I think we should have a little bit of control about that building as far as what's going on in there, as far as, uh, maybe setup, uh, for lack of a better word, maybe your bylaw. I don't know, it could be specific for that building, that biannual, uh, inspections take place. Maybe a local occupancy permit takes place. And, because there should be nobody in the building right now. But an occupancy permit was written by the state, even though there is no fire suppression and even though there is no fire alarms. And only one of those companies in there had an occupancy permit.
Well, but I, I think we can talk about this forever, but I think we need to really get an opinion of the attorney.
I agree with that.
And let the opinion, let, let the attorney give us a road, roadmap or a process to go forward with. Because there's so many issues here and, 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 and I think we need some legal advice. And that would be my advice, is let, when Bill meets with, and you meet with the, and whoever the select board wants to, we can then discuss all this stuff in a executive type session so that we can be able to handle it.
That's what I think, you should just stop, you should stop right now and let the attorneys get back to us and meet with the attorneys.
I agree, because we can't solve the problem, it's too complicated. And I, and I, and I think, I think Alan is also right. If you were to get in there and put yellow tape around a building, then you're gonna own this thing. And then, and then that creates more issues. So let's, let's proceed with some caution, that's why we have an attorney, and let's see what he or she recommends.
And I agree with that a hundred percent. The only thing is, I'm not criticizing, but this should have been done months ago, that we should have, went to an attorney, got some kind of advice. Because I'm telling you, before somebody goes in that building, potentially gets hurt, I do have to step in.
But, but you have, I think...
Don't come to that, I really don't.
I, I think it's important, Rich, to understand that, you know, with the virus, everything has been thrown to a loop. And, and I think, you know, a lot of things have been...
Yep, I agree.
So the the next question is the town pool. What does the board want to do about the pool?
Well, my opinion certainly has been for the past couple of years. I think it's just because at the end of the season last year, uh, after the season had ended, all the signs and everything were still up there. I went down and took all that stuff down and it's sitting up in the town garage, up in the highway garage right now. Um, I think we personally, I think we should leave it down, uh, leave it as a frog pond, a dry hydrant position for the park. I think it's, in in my mind, it's a disgrace to call it a town pool and just leave it as a frog pond and close it up. I I hate to see half posted. I don't know why we have to post it up for new swimming. That may be just a legality that I don't understand. But I mean, if somebody wants to take it upon themselves and take a dump in there on a hot day, but it isn't anything that's authorized by the town or anything like that. I mean, it's just like if they swim in the river. I can't, I guess I don't see the difference.
Well, Stan, I agree with you about the closing, but but I think Bill and Kim, I think they did discuss it with the insurance agency and they said they did make a recommendation. And that was to put up signs. Is that correct, Bill or Kim?
That's correct. And I already have. And the sign would simply say in all cap letters, swimming prohibited. It would be a white sign with a black back, uh, black letters and just like our our your warning signs on the on the street roads and, uh, and and that's what VLCT said. If we did that, that's all we we need to do. We can leave the table there. Uh, and, uh, and there is a chair out there, he noted, but that doesn't belong to us. Just don't take take down that sign that says dogs prohibited from swimming. Get rid of that sign, but just put up the swimming prohibited signs and be done on either end of the of the pond and be done with it.
We had, that's the recommendation from from VLCT. So, um, you know, I I mean, that that's that's would be my feeling.
What do you want to do about maintaining it and mowing it?
I think that's still gotta be done. I mean, if you got a table, I think it's a nice little place for people to have lunch or something. I think that's fine.
Okay, just state that also.
Okay. I. I think that, um, I think you have to mow it. I mean, I if it just got, if you just left it out there and it got all not meaty and everything else, I think it would just look, it would look awful. And and there are people who go out there and have picnic lunches and just kind of sit out there and and it is it is, you know, it is a decent spot if you don't mind getting blasted with, uh, with dust, but but still, um, you know, that's up to you, that's up to, you know, up to the board, but however you want to do it. We need to make a decision.
Well, I'll I'll make a motion that we, if we have to, I'll make a motion that we post swimming prohibited signs, still maintain the property, start mowing and things like that with a picnic table.
Stan, I only heard about half of what you said.
Yeah, there's something blinking in the background.
Yeah, it was this stupid phone thing of mine. I'm trying to get rid of it. So anyway, go ahead.
No, I made a motion that we, um, put up the swimming prohibited signs as VLCT recommends and still maintain the property as far as mowing and the the picnic table. For passersby's for picnics or something.
Do we have a second to that?
I would second that, but I have a question. Can we include in the wording something that says after the no swimming part, something that says water supply maintained for, uh, fire protection or something like that that gives that a purpose that that indicates it's not a wa, it's not a swimming place, it's it's there for fire protection.
Or fire pond only.
I'm a little little reluctant to call it fire pond because then it'll add confusion to the fire pond we already have.
But there is a, there is a dry hydrant there.
I know.
So it can be used.
I know. And and just for for the sign to designate it as a fire water supply after it says no swimming, that should make it fairly clear why it's there.
I agree. I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't think that's an issue to put that on there. You could actually put the swimming prohibited, then you can put another sign where the dog sign is saying that it's a, it's a fire, whatever you want to use.
Well, why don't we go with the recommendation that was given to us? They didn't, they didn't add anything else to it. And that was what was, we asked them to give us and that was what they gave us. Now we're now now we're adding things to it.
Well, we could, but they probably don't know that there's a dry hydrant.
Oh, yeah, they they do. Wade Wade Missouri came and looked at it. Wade Missouri came and looked at it. He says, he says, this is just for a fire pond, right? And I said, yes. He said, fine. And he, swimming prohibited, and he also said, and he also said, if someone swims in there, they're at their own risk. There, you're fine. You don't really care if anybody swims in there, but you're not saying you can swim here. That's the main thing. So our liability is gone if we put up swimming prohibited.
Yeah.
I'll I'll stand by by motion.
That's fine. I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion?
Did you second it, Al?
Al, Al seconded. Okay.
Yeah.
All 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 in favor of of Stan's motion to, uh, convert the to a put to put the signs up, swimming prohibited and and, um, that's it.
Maintain the property.
And to maintain the and to maintain the fire pond or whatever you want to call it.
Maintain mowing and picnic table.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Town folks have any say on their swimming at all?
Excuse me?
It's just up to the board.
Say that again?
So the town folks that have used the pool, they don't have a say in any of this? Of swimming?
No, no, the select board makes a decision. If they if they don't like it, they can come back to us and ask us to reopen it again, I guess.
Well, again, they they can swim there if they assume their own responsibilities. It's a body of water. If they want to jump in it and splash around, that's up to them. But we're we're saying that we're not, uh, it's it's just not okay with the with the board.
If they get sick or something happens to them, then that's not our responsibility.
Right.
And I'm sure if somebody will swim in there.
Oh, yeah, well.
Hasn't been that hot yet.
Change the quality of the water. The water will not be tested, but the quality of the water will not change one way or another if the signs up.
No, no.
Bill gonna order the sign?
Huh? Yeah, I have them all but ordered.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? If not, say who's in favor of closing the the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay, and so it's four to one. As I am, as I read, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Is that right? John, you're against and Stan, you're against and Alan and I am and Kathy is again, I mean, four and Kathy's against. So four to one, okay? All righty. Um, Kim, if the cemetery deed signed, what does that mean?
Um, I have a deed that's here for Kathy to sign if she could come in as clerk. We sold on two grave sites to Kevin Nehock. In the, in the Houghtonville Cemetery. The older one, not the new one. And I will, I will have another one coming also.
Now, Kim, just so, now, is this gonna be under the new policy that the fee is gonna be split between the care and the and the actual, uh?
Probably not because this one here was sold before the policy was adopted.
Okay.
Yeah, this.
I think we're still looking for some more signatures down in Bill's office.
Yeah, Kathy, will you go in and sign the deed?
Oh, that hasn't been done? Oh.
I thought I did. I think Al needs to come in and sign a bunch of stuff, too.
Alan, you have three or four things that you need to sign, um?
I plan to do that today when, uh, we come to town for the park.
Okay.
Kim, which one did I sign? I don't remember which one. I signed both of them. There's three down there now.
That wasn't in there, I don't think.
There's the tree, the cemetery and doing.
He's asking if you will sign the deed.
Yes, I know, but she has not signed all three policies, but she needs to come in and sign the deed now and one policy.
Yeah. So maybe Kathy, today, when you, if you're going to the park, can you stop in later and sign them?
Yeah, I can do that.
Um, question on signatures. When we get signatures on a document, is it like, um, the majority? Like, if you had three signatures out of five, would that activate that policy or do you have to have five signatures out of five?
It would be nice to have five out of five if you attended the, if you attended the meeting.
I understand it would be nice, but but I'm from the legal standpoint, once you have a majority, isn't, wouldn't that count?
Yep. Yes. Okay, um, number eight is the, um, virus and the meeting place discussion. So I guess that doesn't change yet, Bill, does it, correct?
No, you have Burgess, number nine.
You skipped Burgess Cemetery.
Okay, well, let's see, I have this other general, I thought I had the latest one, but I guess I never did. Okay, so let's go to.
No, you haven't.
Cemetery.
Uh, it's just that, uh, Tim, Tim, uh, Tim and I talked and John Gregory and I talked and and, uh, uh, we talked about whether or not there's gravel on the property. So Tim, uh, said that if we can, uh, if we want to do test pits, uh, and if John will give me some sites approximately where those test pits would be dug on Tim, on Tim Mueller's property.
Yeah.
I will let Tim Mueller know by email and he will then give us approval of to go on the land and dig it by email. So if 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 you want us to look at that possibility on that property and you approve it, then, uh, I will make those arrangements with, uh, Tim Mueller and, uh, and then John, uh, John will arrange the the digging of the holes, whether the town does it or John gets a backhoe and does it. It's it it'd be, you guys can decide how you want that done.
Well, I don't see any downside to it.
I, my only thought is if we're gonna go up and actually did dig test pits up there, I mean, that that shows some pretty heavy interest in the land up there to purchase, to potentially purchase that. Now, are we prepared in the next budget to either fund whatever that amount was, one hundred and thirty thousand or whatever it is? Are we gonna bond for it? Or how how are we gonna do this? I I don't know that we have any any financing set aside or even a thought process to do this. I mean, we've talked about it, but we've never set anything aside to do this.
Yeah, but Stan, wouldn't you like to know what's there? And instead of wait, I don't think it makes much difference. I I could get ahold of Danny and we could go over there and dig some holes because we drew a lot of gravel on on where that bounds the campground over there during the flood. I don't know how many yards we grew out of there. So that I we know there's some gravel and there's a lot of sand, but we should know this.
Yeah, see, I agree. I I agree with John, Stan. Um, obviously, if there's gravel there and it's something that they want, we want to pursue, then that has to go either go to town meeting or there has to be something. But before you even do that, you have to know whether it's worth pursuing the property. There's two issues now. You've got the cemetery, which you need, and you need and gravel, which the town is always gonna need. So if the voters don't want to do it, then they vote it down. But I think we have to go forward anyway.
Look what you're spending every year now for purchasing it. If if that could be saved, it'd be well worth it.
Yeah, and maybe maybe mow would send would would sell it as a, you know, as a mortgage and instead of the, you know, ten years to pay it off or something of that nature. I don't know.
The the other way to look at it is if you do your test pits and you find out there's nothing there, then you don't need any money and you don't need to talk to the voters. Keep working.
Right. Yeah. But but you, I but I agree with John. If you don't, if you don't do the test pits, then you're never gonna know what's there.
Yeah, I agree with that, but I'm just, you know, we we just haven't even made any kind of an effort at all to to save money or put money to do that. I I agree that it's that it's certainly good to to look into it, but I just think.
Well, I mean, there's very little cost.
Pretty minimal.
Well, you've you've never never spent any time, uh, money, you know, putting it away because you never had any place to look at. Now this came up and what do you do? Just let it go without doing anything?
I mean, there's literally no cost to it.
I think we got it. That was just my thought.
I think first step is to do some test pits and see if there's anything there. The second, then if there is, you figure out how to, what are you gonna do about it? First find out what's there.
I agree with that.
Yep. So do we need a motion or or could we just let Danny, uh, and and John work together and go and we and Bill can talk to, uh, Tim and arrange, uh, the area so we can go and do testing?
That's all you need. As long as everybody approves exactly that, we're fine.
Yep. Is everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Fine.
I mean, we're spending any money. I mean, yeah, I was spending some time, few dollars here, but I mean, reality, no money.
Danny, let me know when you're available.
Danny, we can't hear you.
You're muted.
Danny? Is he still here?
Oh, yeah.
Soon as soon as we get done on Puppen Forest, but we can go walk it, um, you know, beforehand, John.
All right, well, you just tell me anytime and I'll be available.
I'll give you a call.
Okay. All right, is that all on that now? So this, so now it's the the virus meeting place discussion?
Uh, there is no way you can meet until they change the rules, period. I mean, there's no, I don't know what, there can't be any more discussion. There's no way to meet.
Somebody somebody told me that, um, Bellas Falls or the trustees have a meeting in in a building and they're not, they're having an actual meeting. Is that fact or fiction?
I have no idea, but I don't know how you have a meeting. If you had a meeting in a room that's set five hundred, you wouldn't have enough to hold three hundred and twenty five, so it couldn't be a public meeting. You need to have a meeting that has a potential for everybody to attend. And how can you do that when you can get twelve people upstairs? And if you cleared out the whole garage, you might be able to get thirty there, but if four hundred showed up, they can't have a meeting. So if that's the problem with the law, the law is written, it it's an open meeting law. Everybody can attend. So how are you gonna have a meeting with that unless you could have ability for everybody to attend? That's my opinion. If you guys want to do it, you can, but I'm afraid to break in the law until he changes, he changes what he allows for the meeting, which right now is twenty-five percent of the meeting of the room capacity. And that that won't accommodate the town. I don't know how else you can define it.
All right. Well, then we just wait for him to, um, to, we wait and see what happens. Is there any other discussion on the virus while we're, you know, besides that?
No, he didn't change anything in the news conference today except to extend the whole damn thing until July fifteenth.
Okay. Um, next item is the tree policy. So we have the tree warden's job description. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've looked at it. The only thing you've got to add to it is how much you're gonna pay them.
Right. The only thing that I would question on the whole thing would be the licensed arborist. And that's gonna be tough. I think that limits, I I understand why you would want that, but you know, just to have familiarity with the care and maintenance of trees is required. But have a, really, that's the field.
Are you talking about the, said it against that, you broke up.
Under the second page, under qualifications, number two.
Right.
Says a licensed arborist is preferred. Uh, and I would, I would agree with that. And I think that really limits the field of the any any individuals that want to do it.
Yeah, but the next question says, but not required. Yeah, but the next question says, but not required.
Right.
Right, no, I agree with having it, but, you know, if it's, I, I just think you limit it quite a bit and just have the familiarity with care and maintenance of trees is required. I mean, it's fine being there, I just think if you're looking for that person, it's probably gonna limit your field, who's gonna sign up for this.
It's, it's not required though, Stan.
I, 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 I see that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would agree, Stan, if it said that was a requirement, but it's not a requirement. So, um, so if, if, if you get a good person, but it doesn't have a, a forest license, then, then you can make that exception and, and hire that person. Um, so John's point was there's no compensation, so what do you, what, what does everybody feel about what he, he or she should get paid?
Well, you're paying the, you're paying the, uh, constable three hundred dollars right now. So if you started at that rate, at least it's a rate that's already out there and then you can make a determination based on how much work this individual is actually gonna do, you can change it based on that.
You mean three hundred a year?
That's what the constable gets.
Does, does, does he, does he or she get, um, gas and things like that for their vehicle?
Constable?
No, there's a tree warden here, under this here. I mean, the tree warden's gotta, it's gotta ride the roads, I mean, there's a cost there for him.
Well, it's a cost to the constable too. They can't, they can't ride around.
The tree warden hadn't had much of any type of responsibility up until you just made this job description, so that's why there's probably never been anything else for a tree warden.
We set a figure of, of something that we're already paying somebody. This person puts in a thousand hours a year or something, and, and you change it. They're just gonna do, I mean, up until this point, the tree warden didn't do anything.
No, but I believe that, I believe that with the, with what the legislature is, is talking about amending and with the Emerald Ash Borer situation coming, I, I, I would see that the tree warden is going to be a little more active than he had in, than he or she had in the past.
Is there any suggestion on payment with other towns that have tree warden job description?
There aren't any that I could find, VLCT has no description.
No, I'm talking about pay, pay rate.
Don't know.
I think if you put three hundred dollars there, you're not gonna get anybody.
All right, great.
Well, then we gotta raise the constable, I mean, why have a constable at three hundred dollars?
Our fire warden's only three hundred also.
Yeah. So, I mean, if you're not gonna get anybody to do this for three hundred, why are we paying these other people three?
Up until last year, the fire chief didn't get a hundred.
Tell me about it.
Well, may, maybe, what, maybe what we should do, um, is put three hundred dollars and then when we sit down and do the budget, uh, for twenty-one, um, then we can, we can, we can discuss the, the, all the rates and maybe just have to raise them all. But at least that's a starting point.
And, and that's kinda my point, I mean, let's start from something, put something in there and then we'll see how much either is involved or do something, but let's start somewhere.
Well, if you, if you're paying the fire warden three hundred and you're paying the, the constable three hundred, then it makes sense to pay this guy three hundred, but maybe three hundred for all these positions is not to correct them out. But that's something we can't discuss now.
Yes, I agree with that.
And something really interesting, up until about two or three years ago, there were only a hundred and fifty. I gave them a pay increase.
Fifty percent, that's pretty big.
Okay, so from one fifty, wow.
So the, is everybody, everybody likes the tree warden job description?
Yeah.
The only thing we didn't like was the, the value, so can we put three hundred and get a motion to pass this? Or how do you wanna handle it?
Do we have to put a figure down? Cause you have it, shall be paid a, a yearly stipend to, in the amount initially set by the.
Well, that's what we're doing.
Negotiable, sounds like.
Actually, that would actually be really smart to do since you're gonna go visit it next year and we don't put anything down for any of the others. It's a stipend in the budget.
Yeah, I agree with Kathy that, that we don't put anything in it.
Okay. Well, if, if that's the case, say, somebody wanna make a motion to, to, to accept this thing and go forward?
Yeah, I'll make that motion that we accept the tree warden description with no compensation.
So as written?
As written.
I'll second it.
Okay, Kathy, do we have any more discussion over this tree warden, this job description? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, all right, so we knew, we do now have a job description. We don't have to sign this or anything, right? But, um.
No.
Just accept it, okay.
So what are we gonna do, uh, put that in the paper or?
I was going to advertise it in the Grafton News, uh, this, at the end of the month.
Okay.
Okay, that works for me.
Is that all right with everybody?
What's it gonna be paid, what are you gonna say?
Of, I'll figure, take the first paragraph or whatever, what the job description is and that'll what it says.
Yeah.
And, and, and they can read the job description at Town Hall. Or on the website.
Okay, the, the next item is the tree, uh, at the pump park, I thought we discussed that already and I thought there was money in one of the, one of the funds to, um, remove the tree, put more topsoil in and then replant the tree.
Yeah. That was, that was in the minutes, but it was without any, that was in the minutes, but you didn't really say anything, so I put it on here so we could discuss it. Kim and I discussed it, there is money in the park fund to take care of that. And so as far as I'm concerned, it could be removed from the agenda and you guys can just do it or you guys can say, let's just do it, one or the other.
Well, Stan, you were the one who talked about it.
That's why I dropped last time, because Kim had mentioned that there was some funding, so we, she was gonna look it up and that's why it wasn't taken care of.
Exactly, and there is funding, there's twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. So I would, um, definitely make a motion to go ahead and do the tree, just so I have it for my minutes to give to the trustee of public funds.
Okay.
Board.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Second it.
Okay. Any other discussion? So all in favor of, of removing the tree and fixing the, the issue, um, and come out of a, a fund, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
One thing, I, should we, would, would Bill make that contact or do you want me to make that contact, Bill? Cause I, I talked to Amber about it.
Either way, Amber's on here, I think.
She was.
I think, well, she's off now. Yeah, I, we could, no, I think Amber's on here.
Oh, yeah, she's still here.
Yeah, Amber's still here. You hear that, Amber?
I'm here, I heard that.
Okay.
Okay, will you do that?
I'll pass that on.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Um.
A question, Kim, I have a question for Kim.
Okay, go ahead.
That twenty-three thousand dollars that you talked about?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, could that be used in the village park for anything or is that?
No. It's just, is just designated for Wilson Park.
Wilson Park only, okay.
Yeah.
Um, there was a, I guess, so the next item is the considerations of local resolution to the legislature, read the funding for the virus and financial impacts.
Uh, timeout, we didn't do anything about the operation and maintenance agreement of Trehan.
Right.
Okay, well, that's another one on our agenda, okay?
All you gotta do is say, yeah, we'll sign it. It's the same thing that, there was the agreement when, when we got the property.
Yeah, sign it.
Sign it.
Sign it.
Okay.
Make a motion, somebody.
I'll make a motion.
All right, second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so all in favor of signing the, um, the agreement for the Trehan property, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so, Bill, who's gonna sign that?
Okay, thanks.
Who signs that, the whole board?
Oh, yeah.
Huh?
Uh, Chair can sign it, I don't, I, I can sign it if you want me to.
Yeah, I was gonna say have Bill sign it.
Yeah, just sign it, Bill. All right, this is the, this is the resolution.
I'll add that to the motion.
Okay.
Okay.
This is the resolution that, um, I guess, I'm not sure who wants this to happen, but I guess, so what is this all about, Kim, do you know?
Uh, this is Bill's.
Oh, Bill's.
This is that, this is my understanding, this is the resolution to the Vermont, uh, to, to, from the towns to the legislature to tell them to, uh, provide a financial assistance to towns for monies lost or monies expended because of, of coronavirus. And they're just asking for support from every town.
Is that from the state of Vermont where the monies are gonna come from?
Yes. It's for the state of Vermont.
But I think it's some of the federal money, isn't it?
No, can't be.
No, the federal money that gave.
No, it is not.
No?
So the state of Vermont is like in the toilet with all their funds and they want us each town to dip into state money that they don't have? I, I, I oppose.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's why all of you needed to read this really carefully and decide whether you thought it was good state policy or not before you support it, so it's up to you guys.
I don't support it.
No, no.
No, I don't either. So do we need a motion to not support it or so we just forget about it?
I'll make a motion not to support it.
I would like to see a motion not to support it or a motion to support it fail is what you really are supposed to do.
Okay, then Kathy, you wanna make that motion?
Sure, I make a motion that the Grafton Select Board does not support this.
No, 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 you have to make it in the positive and then vote no.
I don't know how to do that.
You have to do that, you can't vote a negative motion.
So just say, just say, make a motion that we do it, Kathy, and then we'll be voted down, that's all you gotta do.
All right, I make a motion that we, we do it. That's the state of Vermont.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, any, any other discussion? So all in favor of Kathy's motion, say aye?
Aye.
You were, you were.
No, you're opposing it.
Well, he made an offer.
This is for aye, for, for, for the motion. Do we have any ayes? How about against the motion?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so unanimously, we get rid of it.
Everybody, it's zero four, zero five.
Zero five.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. I know that's weird, but that's why you have to do it.
It's okay. Um, the next item, I think, is the sheriff's, uh, contract. And, um, whether or not, and then, yeah, the, the contract. Is everybody telling them?
It's, it's all fine, it's exactly the same as last year, except there is a, is a typo in number five and that typo has to be fixed. It should be, uh, June of, uh, two thousand and nineteen in number five.
I'm overproof it.
Do we have a second?
With the cor- with the correction.
Yes, as amended.
Yep, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, um. So, Bill, will you wanna sign this thing too?
Sure.
So the motion, so all in favor of, um, renewing the, uh, contract for law enforcement services for the, for this twenty-twenty year, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that's done. Okay, now the other question was that, and maybe you wanna explain this, Bill, but I guess there was a discussion that maybe we would, um, combine with Athens, Grafton and Wyndham and get a little more bang for our bucks. Uh, and as I understand from Bill, Wyndham does not want to participate.
That's, that's true. When we had that discussion with Rich Thompson, myself, uh, Lieutenant French and, um, and, uh, the sheriff, uh, Mark Anderson, uh, Mark suggested that maybe, uh, Wyndham, who had talked about it a little bit in Athens and ourselves, could get together and hire one full-time man that we would then share, like, one, one full-time, which is eight hours a, eight hours a week shared between all of us. Um, and, uh, to have that discussion and see, see if, if the towns wanted to do that. Well, uh, Wyndham does not want to do it, they're pretty, they're happy with, uh, they, with their, uh, traffic that they have done. They have the same contract, exact same contract that we have. I have not discussed it with Athens, but if Wyndham doesn't wanna do it, I don't think, even if, I don't think we would wanna do it with another town. And, and secondly, I don't even know, we wouldn't want to do it at all. Uh, are you happy with the police coverage? If you are, then we can just drop the whole thing.
I would, I, I personally would say just, just with what we currently have, maybe at some point we can actually increase it a little bit, maybe next budget or something, but I, I think you keep it as a standalone town is what I.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I, I agree with Stan and John, I, I, I think we just signed the contract and we've been doing okay so far.
One of the, can I interject a little bit?
Go ahead.
Uh, why this was all brought up is because and why we had the state police involved in it and why, why we were gonna enter the, at least the, the talks with this. More and more, it's becoming issues with the fire department going out with, uh, really no police protection. Uh, we've had numerous incidents the last couple of years and, uh, what really, uh, brought this up to a head was, oh, a month ago or whatever. Uh, we had an, an incident that we really needed, uh, the PD there and the state police was, was not available. And we went out on another call just the other day and it was, uh, I'm not gonna give you the details, but, uh, the, uh, we should have had, uh, someone there from the, the PD and they were also not available. So more and more, as their resources gets spread thinner and thinner, uh, you know, this does gonna rear its ugly head, if you will. And, uh, again, I mean, the small communities, we have to start taking care of ourselves cause, you know, guess what, the state is not going to. Uh, the select board says, well, we don't need any kind of extra, you know, police protection, that's, that's fine. But, uh, there is, uh, more and more, there is a need for it as far as, uh, what, what, what I'm saying. There's, I can, more and more, the last couple of years, we have had some drug calls that put myself and another responder very much in harm's way. It'd be damn near gonna run over by a, uh, druggie shooting up. Uh, we've had, I don't, I'm not gonna get into the details, but, uh, drunk driving things that we have had that, you know, the police, sure, they had showed up to most of them, but they were, you know, half hour out, forty-five minutes out. We had a lost person one night that, uh, it was hours before and somebody had showed up and because by the, the, uh, state statute that they can inform me, but they don't have to invite me for an SAR, so there you go. Uh, that's what we're facing and like I said, it may not be the right time now, but at some point it certainly will be.
My point, I think what we may have to do is that sometime in the next budget or two, we may have to relook at. I mean, we're only doing forty-nine hundred dollars. We can certainly increase the amount of time that any one individual is in that, that's increasing the budget.
But you know, Stan, if more tickets were written, you know, probably would be. But you know, Stan, if more tickets were written, you know, probably people would be a little more excited about having more protection, but yeah, I've seen them stop so many people, and they don't give any tickets at all. It's all warrants. So I just, uh, not in favor anymore of what we've got.
Well, their policy, I mean, we're not, we're not telling them to, you know, what speed to ticket somebody. I mean, that's the policy they're gonna follow if they're gonna, if you had them full-time.
Yeah, but that was one of the ideas when we, when this first started, was that we would get back something for the money that we put into it.
Yeah.
And we don't get it much back.
Well.
Every year, it gets less and less.
Yep.
And you know what? Don't forget, though, now there's a new sheriff in town. Hate to use a pun, but uh, you know, and you can really, uh, sit down with this guy, and they really are à la carte, so you can really pick and choose what you want your police protection to be. So if you say him, hey, you know, coming down one twenty-one, going into town, I only want you to allow, you know, seven miles over instead of the fifteen, I believe, is what they're using now. You certainly can't say that.
Well, I mean, do you wanna deal with this now, or is this something we wanna deal with when it comes to budget time?
Yeah, no, you don't, you don't wanna do it now. I mean, just sign this thing. I mean, that's the money you got in the budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just so you know, uh, this year, we have, um, actually received to date nine hundred and forty-six dollars in fines, and we had budgeted seven hundred, so we're up a little bit.
Okay.
You want to have a discussion with Mark Anderson, or no? And if you, if so, who?
I would do it now. I would do it later on in the year when we do our budget.
No, no, I mean about ticketing. Do you want, do you want him to be more aggressive? If so, let's talk to him now.
Not at this time. Let's renew the conversation at the budget, next budget.
Yeah, let's let's talk about it at budget time.
Yeah.
Unless everybody wants to do it now, that's fine with me.
No.
I might, I make a motion, we, uh, sign the contract as written and presented.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
That's all done.
Okay.
That was all done. That was all done.
That's true. We did that, Alan.
They did it once.
This was the discussion.
Talking about it, felt felt like we hadn't done it.
Oh, you're talking about the second part of the discussion?
Yeah, it was the combining with Athens, Gra- Grafton with them, so we're all set there. Do we have any other business?
You got the Humane Society.
Humane.
Oh, yeah, the Humane Society. Let's do that on the on the business.
It's the same contract as before.
I make a motion, we sign the contract for the, uh, Wyndham Humane Society as it's written.
Second.
Okay.
Who signs?
Any other discussion?
Bill can sign.
Have Bill consider it.
Who made the second?
I did.
John did.
Okay, thanks, John.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor of signing the Humane Society contract, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Is there any other business?
Yeah, village designation.
Yeah, can we put that on the next agenda?
Well, I I I want to discuss that. I want to discuss the idea of it not, I mean, the idea of when to put it on your agenda. As I said to you today, there's a whole s- series of things they gotta do, or somebody has to do with ACCD before they even file the application. If you, if somebody, if somebody would kindly read that, especially somebody from the planning commission, they'd understand that they gotta do a whole bunch of homework before they go to ACCD or to anybody else. Then they've gotta come to you for the town's permission to apply for it. So I, you could put it on for your next, uh, meeting on July sixth to, if they want to come to you and ask if they can go ahead with it, yeah, but then they've got to, and decide who's gonna go with them to talk to ACCD. Because there's a lot of work to, ACCD wants to be right up, right at at the beginning of the process, and maybe the planning commission has already done this, and ACCD wants to be involved in the map. It says right in the in the thing. I don't know what AC, I know the Wyndham Regional has been involved, but I don't know if ACCD has. So so if if you put anything on your July sixth meeting, it would be simply, do we want them to start the process of getting ready to apply for the the, uh, downtown, uh, centered, the village-centered designation? And then, once they get that done, have the public meetings so that you guys can decide whether or not the town wants to apply. I'm not sure they've talked to the market, to the Wyndham Foundation, or to the Historical Society, who have, all of whom own property in the village along with the town. I don't know that they discussed, they have discussed this with anybody. So I don't think they're ready to start the process, but if they are, then they should come to you to ask if it's okay if they start the process, it seems to me.
I I had a, I had a discussion with Dave Culver a year, months ago, when the town plan was, when we were approving the town plan, and he indicated to me that they were going to have a, um, an open, a public meeting, and they were gonna bring in the the designated people to to tell, to explain to the villages and the the village residents and the businesses what the advantages and advantages aren't. So my question is, is that they have not done that. I don't, I don't know if it's good or bad. I I don't know what the ramifications are, good or bad, and I think that for the residents of this town need to understand what what they're actually doing. Um, I I'm get concerned because I see every single week, every single year, the state has more and more control of over the towns, and I don't know whether the this has, this is gonna affect us in any shape, manner, or form. But I would like to, I personally would like to know if it's a good thing or a bad thing, and who could take advantage of it, and why are we doing it? That's just my feeling.
Well, I think that's a good point for next meeting to have Dave come in and 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 do that.
Yeah.
Just to explain the whys and the wherefores of it. I I agree with Joe. I think that's, uh, the next meeting. I mean, there was a thing that came out, something about Dave being there on the next meeting, and I I kinda agree with that. It's just, is that even the direction that we wanna go in?
Well, I got a, I got a, I got an email from Dave, and I told him that we would, he wanted to go on the agenda for the July sixth meeting, and I told him that I would talk to Bill, and we would put him on the agenda for him to explain. I haven't told Bill yet, but I mean, that's what was my email. I think I sent you an email copy of it.
No, and I saw the email back. He says he cannot be ready to explain the, what it means, the process means by July sixth.
Oh, okay.
And that's my point. That's my point. If he, if if you guys gotta gotta decide how you want, somebody's gotta decide how you're gonna proceed on this that makes sense. What he is doing makes no sense. You gotta know what you're doing before you're gonna do it. And so how do you want to do that? It seems to me he has to have a town meeting and and explain what this process is, and then, yes, we will apply for it. We'll come out of that meeting, or no, we don't want that. We'll come out of that meeting. You gotta have a meeting to make that decision, it seems to me.
That was my feeling, and that's what Dave told me they were going to do. Originally, this is going back six months ago, five months ago. So I was a little surprised that all of a sudden they want us to to sign this thing without having a public hearing about it and explaining to, not only to the select board, but to the residents of why we need to do this. And what what are the advantages?
Right.
I mean, why we do, to me, this is seems to be an important step. And and I, I personally, I I mean, I'm not opposed to it. I just wanna know what it's all gonna do for us.
Well, I think it's to to get more grants. If you, if you have the village designation, center designation, you get, you qualify for more grants, and I think I had gone to one meeting, that was a public meeting, and there was another one I did not attend. Um, and there was a lot of information on what the village designation means, and he's still waiting on maps, I understand. That's why he said he couldn't give you a whole dissertation on July sixth. But I think he's willing to come to talk.
Well, I didn't get the, I didn't get the memo, Bill said, but he's not ready to come to the July sixth meeting. Is that correct?
It's in, it's emailed to you, Joe.
Yeah.
I just got a copy of it. I didn't read my email.
Got that email. I think everybody got that email.
Okay, so what it said?
He's waiting on maps, too.
Three, four days ago.
Right.
Set out three, four days ago.
But it doesn't seem as though you have to have a map to explain the intent of what this thing is all about. That that could be a step farther down.
Before it begins the process, it says in the process, you talk to ACCD about what is required, and you talk to ACCD, and they help you develop a map. Then you begin the process. That's what it says in the guidelines. I'm, I just read them today. I didn't read all the guidelines, but I read that one.
Well, well, maybe they've done that. I don't know.
And Joe, I gotta leave you. I'm sorry, but I gotta leave.
Okay. All right, so how do we wanna proceed? Do we wanna put him on the agenda, or see what he wants to do?
Put him on the agenda.
We can put him on the agenda, and if he's ready to to do something, fine, but for what purpose is he on the agenda?
I think he's gonna, he should, he should be there to just give us an idea. I don't, we're not starting, we're not signing anything. I just think it's to give us an idea of what direction it, what what the intent, what the purpose is and all this other stuff.
Okay.
It gives us an opportunity to to understand what he what he wants, and and we can then question him what we want, and I, at least we can get, you know, um, some kind of semblance of where we're headed. That's how I look.
It's not necessarily the start of the process.
No.
It's just to find out what it's all about.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
All right. So if not, then we can deal with it later. Any other, any other business? If not, do we have any public comment?
Yes, I'd like to thank Wendy for doing the minutes last meeting.
Thank you, Wendy.
It was nothing. It was really nothing.
Any other?
They were very good. Thanks, Wendy.
Any other? Okay, so the the next, the next scheduled team meeting is July sixth at three o'clock. So now, I guess we're journeying now to the park. Is that correct? Alan, is that what we're doing now?
That's what my understanding was.
Okay, so when do you want us there? How long can we all be there?
Takes me twenty minutes to drive there, but I can be there just just driving time.
Okay, so it's, it's it's five thirteen, so do you wanna meet like at five, at five thirty, five thirty-five, something like that?
Five, five forty-five. Give Alan a little bit more time.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, quarter to six.
Okay.
Just saying.
And what are we doing?
And, um,
we're just, I go look.
How how much hiking are we gonna do? Do we need to put my hiking boots on or what?
I would, and if you've got any deet, I'd put some deet on, because there are ticks in there.
Okay.
Um, I would suggest that we park along Fire Pond Road, and that we would go in and look at the area where we've talked about, the parking, the parking lot, parking area, and then we'll look at an area with, uh, the, uh, barberry, so you get some idea what's there. And I'd like to walk over to part of the trail system over to where um, I'm hoping that we would put the lean-to, so you folks have some appreciation for that. I was not, I was not, um, trying to get everybody to hike the whole trail system, but.
All right, so all right, so let's let's adjourn, and we'll go over and meet at the, on Fire Pond Road, and Alan will direct us where we need to go. How's that?
Okay.
Okay, so a motion to adjourn?
Well, are are we adjourning?
To, um, to reconvene, I guess, to to whatever.
Well, I I think you guys can adjourn. There isn't gonna be anybody there to take minutes. I asked Al, and I think you just treat it like a site visit. If there's notes to be taken, somebody can take notes and give them to me.
Okay.
Okay.
That works for me.
Okay.
That worked for me. Yep.
Okay, so a motion to adjourn?
Eat a portion.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All righty.
Okay.
Okay, all right. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.